All the meeting in order. Clark, would you please? Would you please, uh...
Yes, sir. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 30-4-80B, as amended, notification of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting on the County Council Building at a publicly accessible place on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification.
Thank you very much. For a pledge of allegiance, I take it done by Mr. Salz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks and praise to you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to be here, the state that you've created. We just thank you and praise you, dear Lord, in all your glory. We ask a special blessing, dear Lord, for those families and those people who lost their lives in the plane crash with the Black Hawk helicopter, the Medevac airplane in Philadelphia. Dear Lord, just be with those families, put your arms around them and love them. Dear Lord, comfort them in this time of loss. Just ask a special blessing upon each of them, dear Lord. We thank you, dear Lord, for this county that we live in, this country we live in, for our leaders. We ask for your guidance and direction, your wisdom and mercy, dear Lord, and all that we do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you very much. Approval of consent agenda, do I have a discussion? Any scuff, none, and agenda. Now, per minute, would you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor say aye. Now raise your hand. Any no's? Approval of the regular agenda during discussion. Like not a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda, remove an item 14-2, and place in that as 10A, and removing item 14-5 completely from executive session, and approve the agenda with those amendments.
Second. All in favor? Eight, proclamations, none. Presentations. First time. Let's see.
Andy's going to help me. I'll try to do a little...
The list of projects are there.
So I'll get started. We were fortunate that the voters passed a referendum for a special sales and use tax for road projects and green belt projects in November. That was a $40 million project list with 16 road projects at $376 million and green belt projects of $94 million that we determined. The 16 projects have been identified on the road system. There is, as part of the ordinance, there is an advisory committee. Their first meeting was January 22nd. Their next meeting is February 24th at 1:00 PM. The advisory committee is made up of the mayors of Ridgeland and Hardyville, and the school board chair, and then our chairman Kemp makes up that advisory committee, and they will be working through some recommendations on priorities to advance to this board for their consideration on how we move forward. I have talked to Craig Nguyen at SC DOT. He is currently working on an intergovernmental agreement for these projects. I sent him some information in mid-January, and I touched base with him again today to pass on a little bit more information he was requesting. The big lift that is going on right now with myself is to develop a request for qualifications for a program manager. A program manager is going to be needed to help us get through all these projects. It's going to be a key part in making these things go as we do not have the staffing to manage all these road projects and the green belt projects. That our FQ looking to get out here late February, early March, and again, hope to have somebody on board by kind of a timeframe. The advisory committee was, that was discussed with the advisory committee, and we talked about making sure that we had people that would help select the qualified program manager, and that team that's going to make that selection will consist of county personnel, city personnel, and school board personnel. They will be making recommendations to who they want on that committee to help store that, so again, that means a comprehensive look, and that everybody's got a say into who they're going to hire to manage these programs for us. One of the big things out there is whether we're going to use additional federal funds or we're going to use all local funds. There are some benefits for using federal funds, and there are some drawbacks for using federal funds. In my previous experience, if I could keep things all local, I thought we could get a savings of 15 to 20 percent. However, with this way things are set up and all the road projects being on SC DOT roads, they're going to require us to do their process also. So again, with federal funds, we won't be saving as much going through the state's process, but I would anticipate a 10 percent savings if we stick with just using local funds rather than using the federal funds. If we do get into projects that are using federal funds, we need to become a local public agency. Currently, we are not. Again, the hiring of that program manager is going to help us get there. The other help is that I'm a professional engineer, and that's one of the requirements that the county have, a professional engineer to help administer those programs. So again, that is currently where we're at with that. So that's kind of a quick overview. I can talk to you for hours on this, but you said you wanted a short meeting, so questions.
Mr. Dees?
Not at this time.
Mr. Dorzillo? Mr. Salz?
No questions.
Well, I don't have questions, but I have observation. My first meet, we had a first meeting in January, 28th, whatever day it was, at the end of January, and it seemed so simple. Pick out projects and that's it. But it isn't. It's scheduling, it's I-95 widening, that's part of it, and I understand we want to do things and show people that we're, where money's going. But I tell you, it's, we limited to four projects for the first go-around, and now it could be six. It just keeps on growing. So it's not simple, just want to make sure you know that. And we brought this to you because you're, we're going to have to make a decision with Hardyville and Ridgeland to make these projects go. So I think I sent you a mess, I sent you the projects and asked you to review them. You have the information now, so we'll be talking. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I started having chairman comments at the beginning, so little changes are changes in what we're doing, everybody's aware of it. For the next meeting, we're going to have a cover, we have a cover sheet going out to you people, to the citizens, and that's going to be changed a little bit. It's going to be more friendly, it's not going to be so legalized, and it's going to have a link to the e-packet. So we inform you, we're going to be informing you of the e-packet. Go to it, look at it, and make sure that you have some questions, come to a meeting, or give us a call and tell us that you want these questions answered. Thank you. Number eight, citizens' comments. Does anybody sign in?
Consideration of resolution R-2025-10 approving professional services proposal for architectural and related services by Mosley Architects for Jasper County Detention Center, persuading to Jasper County for procurement code and matters related therein. Ms. Burges.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp and members of council. This is a resolution basically hiring Mosley Architects for their professional services related to the detention center. The detention center had a recent inspection, several deficiencies were noted, and Mosley Architects was the original architect for the detention center, and it would be useful to the county and to the director of the detention center to have someone who can review the deficiencies and to address them, help us address them, and therefore, we have a contract here for your approval, for your bid mostly, and the amount of, I had it and then also, $43,400 is a flat fee. And that's basically to help us, as I said, address the deficiencies found in the inspections.
Any discussion?
No question.
Yes.
And most of the stuff that Mr. Hip brought to our attention is going to be covered by that, I'm assuming?
I believe most of it, yes, sir. So I'm not particularly sure about the backup, the plumbing backup. Don't know if that was an issue when they came, but yes, we will bring that up.
I believe that was mentioned in the reports. I don't think it was mentioned in the proposal. We'll make sure that that's covered. Basically, with the new, Mr. Hip coming in, we've been having done a lot of the previous work in-house to try to tackle some of these items. But in that process, we have now understood the relationship between the county and the Department of Corrections, they have to review certain items before we do them, and the need they require an architect's review of that before we get to work. So as Burges said, they'll review all those items, give us a status of where we are in completing all those items, and also, they'll be the interface with the Department of Commerce to make sure that we get approval to do those in a timely fashion.
Any other discussion?
Quick question. Mosley meets all the qualifications for Department of Corrections and the procurement for the county?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have some things that the council approved previously. They will review those as well, just to make sure that they meet the requirements.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Are there any comments? During the comments, I would like to have a vote. All in favor, say aye, or not a hand. All no's? Pass.
Thank you.
Okay. Second public hearing of ordinance 0-2025-03 approving a development agreement for the Hilli Organics Development Property consisting of approximately 223 acres, more or less, owned by Bellinger Hill Properties LLC in the Bellinger Hill area of Jasper County, South Carolina, persuading to the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act and Article 4, Title 20 of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County, authorizing the chairperson of the Jasper County Council to execute development agreement and matters related thereof. This document is included in the agenda e-packet. First reading was on 12-02, public hearing is 1-06, and this is the second reading. Our second public comment?
Yes, sir. Good evening. In development agreements under the Development Agreement Act, two public hearings have to be held. The first is publicized in the paper, the second is announced at the first public hearing. We announced that back with January 6th. You may also recall that at the January 6th meeting, there was a request to have a workshop with the community at the Bellinger Hill Fire Station, which I believe was held 10 days ago about, after this storm was scheduled and rescheduled. I think that was, I was not there. I understand a couple of you may have been there and attended that, but in any event, this public hearing is to solicit any comments moving forward. There have not been, to my knowledge, since that public meeting, a public gathering, if you want to call that, discussion committee, any suggested changes. Having said that, at the January 6th meeting, things were brought up note that we wanted to have addressed in the final development agreement draft, which included any necessary traffic mitigation, potential noise restrictions, and hours of operation to protect the adjacent landowners and citizens. There were some restrictions, restructuring of the loud uses to narrow them down further, and a look at whether there should be any development fees included on those. In the interim, I have gathered together for your consideration at some point in discussions with the owner, the hours of operation section that we used in a different development agreement dealing with the mining operation in that particular area, and the level noise decibels within 1,000 feet standards that you might consider at our next meetings. I believe the council wanted to have a final workshop on this at some point before they did the final vote on that. That's about all I can say right now. You've had it explained a couple times before. Community meeting, I think, was very helpful. Ms. Wagner, was that the community meeting, so she can assist with any information that may have been developed in that particular matter. But this, again, is no action required tonight, other than opening, taking, open, public hearing, taking comments, and then closing it out.
Ms. Wagner, would you like to say? You don't have to, I'm just giving you a personal...
I thought it seemed to be, it went over well with the community, I do believe. The community asked a lot of good questions, and I think part of it is, you know, community members don't always understand what's going on, so I think it was real helpful to help them understand the project. And we haven't received any comments from any of the citizens since that meeting, nor received any phone calls or inquiries.
Is there anybody signed up to comment?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody here that would like to comment?
I can.
If you would like to come up.
If, Mr. Chairman, if you might just officially open the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry about that. I'd like to open the public hearing, the second public hearing for ordinance O-2025-03. Thank you. Yes? State your name and address.
Madison Daly, 1465 Bellinger Hill, Rip. I guess for comments, I'll probably pertain to the community meeting we just had last week, went over really well. A lot of the community members had some great questions. I thought my brother and I and our attorney answered them, so that's our ability. There was some confusion in the area about, you know, what it is that we're trying to do. I think there's a lot of scare words in our, I guess, our application. Warehouses is probably the main one, and we, you know, kind of came hat in hand to the community and told them, like, guys, we're being very truthful. We're not trying to sneak in something like that. We're not trying to, you know, develop the property. What we're trying to do is, you know, build things that relate to the business and that support the business. And I think the community started to understand that towards the end of the meeting. And also, I want to, you know, mention too, that we did have a lot of support there. I think last meeting that we were here, we made a mistake and didn't invite anybody to come to support us. And, you know, at that community meeting, we had a lot of people stand up and, you know, have our bags in some instances, so, but you have, I think that's pretty much all I want to say, was a good meeting, it was a good idea. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and number. Ah, excuse me, address.
Good afternoon. Quincy Bentley, one on that Cooks Landing Road. I didn't have the opportunity to actually go to the county meeting and do the work, but I had the opportunity to actually go to the site and had a very long conversation with the supervisor, and she kind of walked me around and showed me exactly what it is that she wanted to do. I think, like Ms. Daly said, was a lot of misunderstanding exactly what it is that they were actually trying to do. Once I actually went there and saw for myself what it is that they were trying to do, and I'm personally looking forward to actually working with the Dailies and, you know, talking to them about some of the things that they actually do in the community and the jobs that that site will potentially bring, so I'm kind of excited to actually see it all through the way she put it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Hearing run, going once, going twice, ready, clear, closing, closed. Thank you very much, everyone. 10A, this is the third amendment to the tolling agreement, and let's see, and Nickel Plate. Mr. Teller, could you explain this, please?
In general, some time ago, there was a lawsuit that involved Jasper County, Nickel Plate Road LLC, City Authority Bill. Over a period of years, there were litigation matters that went on. In South Carolina, you have a certain amount of time to bring suit on other potential cause of action. Nickel Plate found themselves in a position where if they wanted to preserve a right, if it wasn't a settlement, to bring an action against Jasper County for money, if they were against it, that began the first tolling agreement, said, we just want, litigants do is that we agree that even though there is a date that we're supposed to file suit by, we agree that we're not going to enforce that date as long as we have this agreement time and date. We'll continue to work for it, a settlement or agreement or litigation. This, particularly in this third one, because it's taken longer because of the holidays of November, Thanksgiving, Christmas, snowstorm, for the other parties that are involved in this to sign off and everything. So the last tolling agreement, the second tolling agreement, was going to expire, I believe, January 31st, before we could get to a meeting. So Mr. Fulger, Mr. County Administrator, signed a conditional waiver of the tolling agreement, which states in it that the council has the right to ratify it or not. If you don't want to ratify it, then it's of no force in effect, and there'll be a short period of time that they could move forward. Administration is recommending that the council ratify the execution on Friday, I guess it was, of the third tolling agreement, and I have the chairman sign off on the ratification.
Is there any discussion? Thank you very much. I'd like to have a motion. So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the execution of the third amendment with the following agreement, or to the toll, the tolling agreement, by and between Jasper County and Nickel Plate Road LLC, by the county administrator.
Do I have a second? Second. Any comments? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. All opposed? None? Pass. Now, Mr. Administrator, hold on.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have one item for you this evening, and that involves Ms. Lisa Wagner. She's going to give you a quick update on... Ms. Lisa Wagner, she's gonna give you a quick update on the Jasper Telfair Plan Development District, and I think I'm going to assist her by handing out, uh, the results of the peer traffic review that the council requested.
Good evening. I believe it was our first, uh, meeting in December, we presented the Jasper Telfair PDD and Development Agreement for second reading, but that, that ordinance was tabled, and, um, we were directed to have the traffic impact analysis study, um, peer review, so staff sent that off to Stan Tech, um, Mr. Fulger just passed out their memo, but basically, the traffic study is dated, I think you, you chairman asked one time about, you know, it talked about the, uh, truck or the container parking as a phase one, so the study is outdated, um, or a little dated, anyway, and, um, several things that this memo talks about is, um, the study that was performed by the engineer, um, and, that, for the applicant, the client, the applicant, um, for Jasper Telfair, it was based on the land use of just the truckyard and the two warehouse buildings. Um, once they came to Jasper County with a PDD, we asked for a PDD, there were some other uses that they could use, which includes a variety of general commercial uses and other uses, so while the warehousing is a lower, um, traffic generator, um, one of their suggestions is that the traffic study needs to be updated, it needs to reflect the other uses that could be allowed by the PDD. Um, some other things is, the traffic study talked about, uh, the intersection of Highway seventeen and three fifteen being under a two-way stop, whereas there's now, uh, a traffic signal, so that wasn't accounted for in the traffic study. There was a discrepancy in the traffic study, they provided for the growth rate between, they used five-point-four-oh for growth rate, um, but in other places, uh, the existing volumes were developed using a six percent growth rate, so that needs to be consistent. Um, another thing was, um, the traffic study shows, uh, two full access points, one on Highway seventeen and one on Highway three fifteen, Jasper County staff did ask that it be a ride-in and a ride-out only on Highway three fifteen, so, um, we'll be expecting them to revise the traffic study and to take, to analyze two different situations, which is, um, outlined by Stan Tech, um, basically on the ver, the very last comment of this memo that was just passed out, um, just show, um, different access alternatives, one restricting access along Highway seventeen to a ride-in and ride-out, and allow full access along three fifteen, or retain the full access along US seventeen, but shift the access point to the south, toward the, the south at a parcel to extend the distance, so they'll need to, um, provide basically data and scenarios based on this outputs. Um, we also would like this traffic report to be approved by South Carolina DOT, and to see what their comments are, and then, um, there was some, some concern about the, um, storage lanes where you make left turn or right turn not being long enough, so, that's basically the gist of the letter, and a bunch of different reasons why it needs to be updated. So it's been, um, sent to the developer and his attorney, um, and they know that we're expecting this to be updated, and we'll have the new update reviewed as well.
So?
So that's where we are right now.
Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, if I could also just add, I believe, uh, Lisa has received a copy of the study from the City of Partyville, too, on the adjacent development.
I did, the Ford Logistics.
So what is our, we just, now this is in advance until they come back with the traffic study?
Yeah, they need to update their study, and, again, we'll want to have that reviewed as well.
So it's just, we're just in limbo right now?
Yes, sir, and then once we know the traffic implications, then we can speak to you about potential traffic mitigation fees.
Could we, and this is just a, um, a sub, could, and the PDD could restrict, and they narrow damages for one item? Meaning warehouses? I think the whole, I'm just.
Uh, technically, we have to have at least two uses into there, um, it's a very arcane and subtle, uh, section of, uh, Local Government Planning and Enabling Act, uh, in a case that came out of Charleston, so there, there has to be, uh, potential for two separate uses there.
And that's in all, all PDDs?
If you're gonna call it a PDD, yes, I, I, I could sit and tell you in a workshop, I hear local counties trying to get around that, or Sparkville County, whatever, but technically, we just wanna have two uses, now, two uses can, doesn't mean, you know, open up a whole broad category, but, uh, a mix of uses can be, one thing out of one category, one thing out of another, um, you know, like having, uh, best example was, uh, a home, a wholesaler can also have a retail shop on site, right? That's two different uses, one's retail, one's wholesale, and that satisfies the requirement, but we're, we're working on that, I think, we have spoken to them about further restricting the range of uses, because by doing that, they reduce the scope of the traffic impact analysis that they have to do. If it's not allowed, they don't have to look at what a, you know, a retail site would have to do to accommodate the parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry, you, is that, you're, finish your report?
That concludes my report, thank you.
Are there any questions further, Administrator? Council members, comments and discussion? Mr. Ralston?
All right, I do have a couple things, um, we don't have a lot of reports us in the last meeting, but, um, the one thing that really keeps coming up is code enforcement. Um, Mr. Chairman, Andy, I don't know if we can sooner or later get a code enforcement workshop established, um, it's definitely one of the, the items that I get blown up with quite frequently.
Yes, sir, I, I can just, uh, comment to that, um, we have a proposal from the law firm that we were seeking to try to assist us to review what we're doing, to give us some suggestions on how to make it better, we'd like to have that process take place first, so that when you have a workshop, they will be able to guide us on what we're doing wrong, uh, and we'd also like to invite the municipalities to that workshop, that is what we are thinking, hopefully that's along the lines of what you're thinking, we have that proposal to come potentially before you at your next council meeting.
Thank you. And then the other thing, um, is, uh, for the administrator, is there any way that you all could provide us with a list of those that represent Jasper County through boards, commissions, appointed kind of positions, with their terms, what their terms are, and when they expire?
We're working on that now.
That's something that the clerk, uh, tracks for you.
Okay.
We can certainly do that, yes, sir.
So you want all of the boards, do you want the county appointed boards, or the boards that the county created?
All.
So i- if you have a, in a point of power on another board, you want that listed as well?
Correct.
And you want all of the, um, advisory committees to report to you also?
Correct, if you can provide that to the council.
Mr. Ralston, I think I'm working on that.
Okay.
Now, I have it in the spreadsheet, and she's reviewing, we're going back and forth.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. Salz, come to the, start us off.
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Fulgram. Um, what's the timeframe that we can be looking at? Do you have something in mind, uh, on the ordinance issue, of when we could have that workshop, when we would, you would get your information back?
I'm sorry, you mean for the code enforcement?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I don't currently, as soon as I have the conversation with the law firm, we can try to firm that up for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Happy to do it.
I thought, I thought we said that was next week, what was gonna be the next?
Uh, we're gonna bring you the, their proposal, um, for potential approval, so we can get that moving, so, uh, that would be on the eighteenth, so I'm thinking, you know, we're gonna need to give them a week or two to review what we have, so that, I just didn't wanna walk into a workshop without some structure and some, uh, guidance on the what we can do to make things better.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's up to me. February is Black History Month, just to let everybody know, it's also Heart Month, didn't know that. Well, I can get your report checked. Very important. Thank you. And Valentine's Day, go figure. Anyway, uh, code enforcement, very important, I think we're starting to see some kind of movement, we have some stuff going on that's never been done before, but it's very important. I, I suggest, or I imp, or the administrator, to get this done as fast as possible, I think that's one of the biggest things we get called on, is code enforcement. Also with that, and you've brought this up before, I'd like to have, with that, a workshop on joint services, because that's, you had brought that up before, and that would be just an in, going in for, for, that's a subject. I attended the I ninety-five review, and next phase, boy, it's, it's really a big thing going on there, uh, they're already from trying, I think they're gonna start admitting anything pretty soon, birds, so it's really moving on its way, and there was a lot of people, uh, there, which was amazing to me, and there's gonna be another, I think another meeting in March, April.
This week?
This week?
Thursday, like the, um, original, senior system.
Thursday, original. Uh, just wanna congratulate Duane Swagert on receiving the Order of the Palm, he's gonna be awarded on February twelfth at four PM, he's invited everyone to go. Now, uh, this is Steiny Road and Mead Road, they had a little ceremony there to push their trucks back into the, uh, firehouse. Chief, would you come up and give that little speech? I, I did make a lot, because I had my challenge coin, and no one had one, so.
I had mine.
The hall, the hall, everybody owes me a drink.
I had mine, I don't owe you a drink, sir.
So, we did, yesterday, uh, the first three, uh, nine apparatus went into service to the community, um, we will be spreading those out, uh, throughout the stuff we, this week coming. Um, so the push-in ceremony follows a, a tradition of the fire service, um, so in the eighteen hundreds, when fire trucks, well, pumpers were horse-drawn, horses could not back them into the firehouse, so, a lot of times the firefighters would have to disconnect it from the horse and push it back into the house, so, as technology and, and motorized, um, apparatus came into the market, they no longer had a need, but it's a way to just pay, uh, homage to, uh, the past as we move into the future, and we absolutely look forward to, uh, putting those trucks into service to our community, making it a better place to live and work, and, of course, that would not be possible without Administrator Fulger and our council, so, we sincerely appreciate and thank you for the support in helping us move forward on improving service delivery to our citizens.
And you have tomorrow, you have four o'clock at Mead, uh, at March O?
I believe that is, I, I don't have it scheduled.
Eleven o'clock at, uh, Robert's, I think.
Yes.
Or eleven or twelve.
So Mead Road was four o'clock yesterday, uh, eleven AM was Robertville, and nine AM was Steiny, um, I'll have to check the schedule for what our next rollout is for the next three apparatus.
Yes. Nice to see firemen pushing that truck in.
Uh, you know what, um, yes, sir, yes, sir, the, uh, the additional, uh, eighty-four-hundred pounds of water was a little bit of a, a challenge, so.
We're just calling weavers. We're just making sure all the waivers are signed. Anyway, I say you very much, any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All of they would say aye, raise your hand, that's, that's for you, all of us, we have to do. Consider it a closing.